So we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Welcome to the October meeting of the Town of Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. I'm going to ask Craig to give us a short indication.
Would you please hum with yourselves for our creators, if you see fit? Creator, we set before you now our needs, our thoughts, and our people. We ask that you be with us during this time of deliberation, that we bring out the best in each other, that we reach decisions that are for the good of all. Thank you for the ones that you've sent here tonight. Keep them safe and return them safely to their homes. All these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm motion to adopt the agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. And Robby will be a voting member again this evening, as he will be. We have two minutes to approve the September minutes and also the draft work session. Have you all had a chance to review the September minutes firstly? Any comments or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt those as written.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the minutes from our work session, I personally would like another little bit of time to review them because we've recently changed them. I don't know if the board agrees with that, or would you rather go ahead and approve what you've seen tonight?
I wasn't here for that, so I can't comment.
Okay. So if you're all in agreement, I'd like to postpone that until our next meeting. Thank you. So we move on quickly to public address. And really what we're doing is we're going to roll that into our public comment session on the draft comprehensive transportation plan. We also have a public comment session on another matter, but I suspect the audience, which we appreciate, it's unusual, is here for the first session. And then I'm going to ask you to give us a quick overview of the transportation plan and where we are in the process.
So this is just a real brief presentation, just to give you a little bit of an update on where we are on the process, a tentative schedule update, and a little bit more information on where we are as far as the status of the draft plan. So as we've been mentioning, we have a public comment portal available on the Transportation Plan Update website, which is on the screen here, townofmorrisville.org/transportationplanupdate. You'll see an icon in the top right of the webpage that says comments, questions, concerns. If you click that, you'll be able to fill out a web form. There's no limit on how much text you can put in there, so you fill that out. That comes directly to staff, and we are compiling those comments and getting them to the boards at their different meetings. And that public comment portal will stay open until the Planning and Zoning Board closes their public comment session for this plan, and then it will reopen for the Town Council work. So far to date, we've, and that's as of today, this afternoon, we've received approximately 132 comments. And as I mentioned, the online portal will close when the PZB public comment session is closed. We expect the Planning and Zoning Board to be able to close that public comment session on November 9th. And then that gives us, that'll give us about a month to accumulate all the comments that have been submitted, and then bring you back a final draft plan with all the comments that have been submitted to date, with the goal of December, a year December meeting, submitting a recommendation to Town Council on the plan.
What's the cutoff? There's some comments I was noticing in the packet tonight. What's the cutoff of those comments?
So for tonight's, for your packet, the cutoff was, I believe it was, I compiled those around 10:00 AM last Thursday, I believe, or Friday even. So, and then we're sending another, an updated batch to Town Council. And so Town Council will see all the comments you see tonight, plus those that are, that were received through midnight this, or 12:00 AM this morning. And so your next meeting will give you the next batch that will have been received through probably midnight a week before your meeting. That gives us time to compile the comments and give them to you in a timely fashion. As I mentioned, we do have a little bit of an update for the tentative schedule. You've already had two, you've had a meeting and a work session on this plan, so after that, and the work session with Town Council, and receiving the public comments, we talked to staff and with our consultants and with Peter, and decided that it was a good idea to give the Planning and Zoning Board a little bit more time to go through the plan and make sure that it's, they have something they feel comfortable recommending to the Town Council. So we'll continue the public comment session tonight on November 9th, with the goal of being able to close it on that night, and then you'll have your recommendation on December 14th. The goal there being, we would have the, you know, a final draft plan out a week or two before the November 9th meeting, and then following the November 9th meeting, we would have the final draft plan available for the Planning and Zoning Board until the public sometime one to two weeks before your December meeting, so you'll have something that you would officially recommend to Town Council at that time. Town Council has a work session scheduled for this coming Tuesday, and then we expect the adoption process to begin in January with the council, at which point the public comment portal will reopen. And then, of course, the status of the draft document so far. What you have seen tonight, what was in your packets, is a September 25th draft. That's also been posted online. That's the second draft that addresses the initial Town Council, Planning, Zoning Board, and staff comments. And then we expect the final, a final draft prior to the November 9th meeting for final public comments. And then we'll have the, we'll bring what will be the, what will turn into the Planning and Zoning Board's recommended draft in December prior to that meeting. And then just wanted to talk about a couple of revisions that we've already, we as staff have already talked about with our consultants. Some of these are a little bit more technical, but we're working on getting some additional roadway cross-sections for local roads. One of the things we realized is that there's not a real good Main Street-type cross-section for some of our town center roads. We're gonna, we're working with our consultants to get some additional cross-sections there. We're also going to be doing some updates to the cross-section matrix that you've seen in Chapter 3, and make that a little bit clearer, and also associate that with the, or reference that back to the street hierarchy, and make it clear what street and town has what cross-section. We found out that it was a little unclear on some roads, so we're going to make that clear. We're also going to be working on the intersection improvements recommendations language, as well as giving some examples of what those may be. It's not really possible in this plan to say what intersection improvements will be needed at each intersection. So what we're going to be doing is saying, these are, these are some examples of typical intersection improvements, but then each intersection that's identified in this plan for improvement will need its own little study, traffic study, to determine what exactly improvement, what improvements are best for that intersection. And that'll be one of the implementation items that'll be added, is those studies, some additional policy recommendations that ultimately will, you know, are recommendations to come up with additional policies for the Town Council to adopt, to clarify some things and get us, get some standardized information. And also some additional studies will be recommended for some roadway extensions, possibly Crabtree Crossing Parkway extension, as well as some of the other road projects that are recommended in the plan. And then, following public comment period tonight, if the Planning and Zoning Board wants to have some discussion, one of the things we would like to hear from you especially is if there's any implement, any other implementation items that the Planning and Zoning Board feels should, should be added into the plan, that, or any areas where you think the plan may be lacking on implementation items. So, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Ben. So we're going to move ahead to our public comment session. And what I'd like to suggest is that we follow the normal rule, which is to limit an individual's time to about three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, then we'll allow you six minutes. It's often more effective, if I may say this, if a member of the group comes to make the presentation, and the members of the group who are in the audience, who are in sympathy with that position, would like to stand momentarily, then we'll get a sense of the strength of audience behind that speaker. But for the interest of time, we're going to keep to six minutes for a group and three minutes for an individual. We are not in a position to enter into a question and answer session, let alone a debate, so we're here as a board mostly to listen to your comments this evening. I'd like to go ahead with the first person, I believe, who signed up, Ms. Karen Butler. If you'd like to come to the podium. And if you would be kind enough to introduce yourself.
Yes, hello. I'm Karen Butler. I, my mailing address is 1204 Village Marketplace, number 201 in Morrisville, and I would like to vehemently oppose the Crabtree Crossing extension. I think the best way I can explain that is to show people Crabtree Crossing. It's a residential road, it's not a connector, it's not a thoroughfare, even by the transportation people's own definition. This was taken yesterday at 4:00 in the afternoon, and it's up and back, and a little bit more going down and back on Crabtree Crossing once. And the garbage collection was done on Monday morning, because that's when garbage collection So you can see this is just a nice residential road. Traffic would be blocked by garbage collection, by mail, by UPS and FedEx, by bike cycling groups come down this road twice a week, and then more small groups come every, every day.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. I did fail to ask, were you acting, speaking as an individual or a member of a group?
Me neither.
Thank you. Next person on our list is Fran Salmon. Again, if you would introduce yourself, and let me know if you're speaking as an individual or as a member of a group.
My name is Fran Salmon. I'm here as an individual. I live on 1208 Crabtree Crossing Parkway. I too vehemently oppose the extension. Crabtree Crossing Parkway between Morrisville Parkway and Cary Parkway is about two miles. And in that two miles, we've had, we have 13-speed bumps, we have three golf cart crossings, we have 11 spaces between medians for people to take U-turns to access their driveways. We have a 25 mile per hour speed limit. This is a street where neighbors walk to each other's homes, children bike to Prestonwood Country Club, people walk their dogs, families go out with their children, grandmothers stroll with their grandchildren, and people feel safe there. Diverting traffic from major and minor thoroughfares to a street like Crabtree Crossing would fundamentally change our neighborhood. We also have, as Karen mentioned, we have events, we have at Thanksgiving a turkey trot, biking events. This is a real community of neighbors who know one another. We've already experienced traffic problems during the construction of the elevated railway over Morrisville Parkway. People coming through on a detour did not respect the speed limit, did not respect stop signs, and traffic sometimes was backed up, 40 cars. As you could see in the video, a lot of things can back up traffic, school buses, garbage trucks. We have landscape services that come in from Bland Landscape, and they park their trucks. Sometimes it's hard to get around anybody moving. We have moving vans that, that have to fit on the streets, and people kind of use the medians to try and get around. So this would really be ineffectual for, for the amount of traffic that it would be expected to come through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salmon. Next, we have Larry Kraglo, I think.
Greetings. My name is Larry Kraglo, and I live at 125 Bending Oak Way. When the traffic is heavy, it's either Crabtree Crossing, or it's, it's up the creek and in Preston Grand Way, so we're sort of in that local road area. I oppose the Crabtree Crossing extension. I was surprised to learn of this current recommendation, since the issue was, we thought, resolved in the 2008 plan debate. And at that time, the resolution was to build a bicycle path where the extension is proposed, and that was approved. However, it's not yet been done. The reasons for that path and not to extend Crabtree Crossing were pretty obvious. It's a local road, and, and those reasons remain valid, and were reinforced during, which is already mentioned, the construction of the bridge, or the railroad overpass. Although there was an intended detour on appropriate roads, it only took drivers a few days to, to clog our local roads and neighborhoods to find a cut-through. And at Northwest Parkway, back for Rainbrook and Preston Grand Way, there was sometimes three blocks of, of traffic at a standstill. That reiterated the reasons we thought it shouldn't, that Crabtree Crossing shouldn't be extended. The unending flow of traffic was inappropriate and dangerous, as we've already heard. So I've lived here nearly 20 years, and to me, the traffic issues in Morrisville have always been related to commuter traffic. This landlocked town of ours is between commuters from the south going north and vice versa. It's the reality. We have this very limited space. And, and it, in light of that constrained geography, we think it's dangerous and, to try to convert and not, the right priority to try to convert local roads to a connector road. The most important priority, in my opinion, is that we need to continue to improve 54 and Davis Drive, trying to move traffic, this commuter traffic, north and south. And as we all know, they're nightmares. Nothing compares to 54. And, and what's in the plan to provide east and west pathways is, I think, really good in the plan. The next priority is to improve our neighborhood mobility and accessibility. And I like the words in the plan, and some of those neighborhood connections might make sense, but not when they're converting a neighborhood road, or a local road using the plan's terminology, to a connector.
Thank you, Mr. Kraglo. We're close to your time.
Oh, okay, I'm good. And as I said, these priorities exclude the harmful conversion of Crabtree Crossing, like a lot of the plan, but not this extension.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up will be Mr. Alan Knuckles, and then after that will be Mr. Tony Owen, if you'd like to get ready.
Hi, my name is Alan Knuckles. I live at 105 Bending Oak Way. And I'm here as a resident, homeowner, and I'm the PCA, Preston Community Association President. So I'll be talking on behalf of both. First, as a resident, I've seen how the, when you have one road cut off, when we had the railroad cut off, the number of cars that come down and the safety issues with children cutting through, because everybody just started cutting through our neighborhood. If you would allow an extension like this, with the technology that we have today, using Waze and all these other applications, as soon as you get one little hip, they're going to throw twice the amount of traffic through a neighborhood, a community, instead of a major thoroughfare like Davis Drive and Highway 54. So for that reason, I'm highly against this. The second reason is, as soon as you throw all these cars down a, a street like ours, it doesn't handle it. When we had the railroad crossing, it took me 15 to 20 minutes some mornings to get out of my neighborhood, or to get to places. So it's, the roads, putting a major road from 147 downtown hall and cutting through Crabtree Crossing would be a disaster and a safe, a highly safety issue with the technology we have, because it would just direct it. And everybody knows that's how it would work, you know, with the technology that we have today. Okay? Secondly, as the President of Preston Community Association, I'd like the first Deer Planning Board and Zoning Board, and Morrisville Town Councilman and Mayor, so I saw them here tonight, I'd like to direct us all about that. We, the Board of Directors of Preston Community Association, last Thursday unanimously representing about 1,200 homes in the Preston Community Association, of which over 38% of those live in Morrisville, opposed the Crabtree Crossing extension proposed for the comprehensive transportation plan. We believe the foreseeable determinants to our Preston community far outweigh the potential benefits of this proposed connection, and therefore, we strongly do not support this plan. We urge the removal, the complete removal of the Crabtree Crossing extension as a connector to the Town Hall Drive from the plan, and allow it to remain a greenway as approved in the 2009 transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
My name is Tony Owen, the current President of the Preston Falls Villas Homeowner Association, and a longtime resident of 749 Crabtree Crossing. Represent our board, and here tonight, we have a large, we have a number of our residents. At this time, I'd like for our Preston Falls Villas residents to please stand. As you see, we're, we're all in red. We're all standing, and we're all together, and we're all concerned about this project. Thank you. And thank you for having, for allowing us this opportunity to express our concerns. We do not want to see our neighborhood destroyed by converting Crabtree Crossing into a thoroughfare similar to Davis Drive. Crabtree Crossing was designed as a collector, and as such, it's, it's not designed, not built, to handle the type of traffic that you're, we're looking at coming off of 147. And as others have mentioned, commuter traffic through technology today takes this shortest path, and we feel we would be inundated with commuter traffic because of that. There are a number of alternatives. Gentlemen earlier mentioned the work that needs to be done on 54 from Cary to Durham. Tremendous improvements could be made on this very dangerous intersection out here at Aviation Parkway, and many, many alternatives that would improve in traffic and, and alternatives to taking away our neighborhood. Also wanted to mention that earlier today, I spoke with Matt Massey, who is the General Manager of Prestonwood Country Club. He wanted to be here, but he's thoroughly involved with a SAS tournament that's ongoing. He is interested, and he does look forward to speaking with you at a later date. There are others from Preston Falls Villas who have signed up to speak, and this time again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Next on our list, we have Ms. Toomes, Laura Toomes.
Hi, I'm Laura Toomes. I'm from 613 Crabtree, and I vehemently oppose the Crabtree extension for all the reasons that have been mentioned so far. I have a slightly different perspective than most people. For 10 years, I lived in New York City, and for 12 years, I lived in Los Angeles. I know a lot about traffic, and I know a lot about residential traffic, and it's never a solution for a commercial problem. I urge you, if you have any interest at all, to look up Havenhurst Avenue in Encino, H-A-Y-V-E-N-H-U-R-S-T. It was a lovely residential street that had the unfortunate connection to Mulholland Avenue, and it became the alternative street to the 405 in Los Angeles. It is and was a nightmare, not only for the Havenhurst residents, but every road that fed into Havenhurst. And of course, then residents got impatient, as they do. And there was a classic case where somebody thought they could get up on the sidewalk and get around, didn't work out, and they ended up in somebody's kitchen, literally. Residential roads are not built to solve commercial problems. And lastly, my only other point would be, we all know 54 needs to be fixed. The more we attempt to solve the state's problem, the more they're going to let us, and they'll never fix 54. As well as, you know, I did understand the, the final path has been approved for closing 540. So I wonder what the impact would be if 540 is really an open road. Would that solve some of the problems created by the success of Holly Springs and Buquey? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toomes. Next, Mr. Mike Monpetit, and then Ashish Hadda, if you'd like to get ready. Okay, sorry about that. We're on the wrong form here. So, Pyreti, Ready, I think, is the name? If you'd like to see Marty here, she'll get you signed in. If you'd like to see Marty here, she'll get you signed in. Since we're short of the next, would you like to go ahead and give us your name and...
Sure, sure. Hi, my name is Lisa Regal. I'm actually a Cary resident, but just a few blocks away from Morrisville. And some of my neighbors, knowing my background, I'm the Executive Director of Bike Walk North Carolina, and I'm on the Cary Greenway Committee. I'm, I just want to make it clear, I am not speaking on behalf of those organizations. I'm merely explaining my background. So I just wanted to say that to extend Crabtree Crossing up and then eventually connect up into 147 and 540 would be a bad idea. Right, right now, it's marked as a greenway, and the Crabtree Crossing part that's in Cary is not a greenway, but if you look at the greenway plan, it's supposed to have a greenway there, and if you talk to Cary, they're never going to be able to build it. So really, what we have there, which is a bike lane and a nice sidewalk, not even a full sidewalk, you have to kind of go back and forth, is about all we're going to get as far as a greenway. But this road, when you look at it, is a really nice, long connector for alternate modes. So people that want to walk, bike, and yes, there are golf carts on it, and if you turn that corridor into a higher-speed collector, or even probably above, you're really going to eliminate those modes' mobility. And what makes the triangle really great is the interconnected network of trails and greenways, and this is a critical link. You need to have some mode that allows you to get from A to B, where bike, people can bike and walk safely without being on Davis Drive, or 50, you know, all these other roads that are much faster speeds. So I just urge you to think long-term about the triangle, about Morrisville, and about the area, and the need to have different kinds of roads, and allow different kinds of modes to have that mobility. It's an equity issue, it's a long-term vision issue, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Do you could please provide your address?
Sure. Verbally, right now? 104 Gray Bridge Row, and that's in Cary, just a couple blocks from Morrisville, though.
Thank you, Ms. Regal. So, Mr. Ready, Ready, I think is the name, if he's to speak. Well, we'll move on.
Yes. R-A-D-D-Y.
Yeah. Well, we'll move on, then, to Sunil. Vladkar, I think.
I should say Graybridge.
Sunil. Well, not one, not two.
If you have signed up to speak and you're interested in still speaking, if you don't mind, we'll across the wall, have any help of the process.
Thanks, Courtney. So next, I have Terry and Linda Lohman.
I was on a sign-up sheet. I guess you just made a name. I'm Gary Yarborough. I live at 121 Benning Oak Way in the Preston Grand subdivision, and I just want to, I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that have already been said, because that's what was on my list also. But I'd like to say another thing. Not all the streets are Crabtree Crossing with the barriers. The other streets that we have, Ridge Creek, Preston Grand Way, and others, are just regular residential streets. The point is that the houses on these streets all have, primarily all houses, majority all have parking garages facing the front, with the cars backing out of the driveway. This was a major throwaway, which we experienced the problems with the shutdown of Morrisville Parkway and the detours. So that's a safety issue. The other thing is that, from my own experience, is that I'm a, I walk my dog twice a day, early in the morning, in the evening, sometimes all, all the time. Trying to get across those streets where the stop signs are, you, you have to dodge the cars, and you have to be very careful of that. That's during this time with all the, the detour going on. The other thing is, that was mentioned earlier, is that service trucks, there are service trucks on our, on these roads all the time, and it's a zigzag for cars going up. So you don't really have a two-lane road. You have a, primarily a zigzag road all the way through, and this is what is, that we're contending with. And so I'll leave it there, because everything else has already been said.
Thank you, Ms. Yarborough.
Now, other than the point that I'm opposed to the, to the, the issue of crossing.
I understand.
Please call me, I'll go.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Terry Lohman. I live at 745 Crabtree Crossing. I'm representing myself and my wife, and a lot of things have been said. I just want to emphasize again, the experiment of building the train tracks has proven that commuters will cut through anywhere. And I saw it happening, we all saw it happening. I saw in the study that people weren't really sure how much traffic would come through. All I can say is, if you build it, they will go through. Right? I believe that the problem is really North Carolina 54, and it should not be solved by our residential streets. So I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Renee Troy.
I live at 762 Crabtree Crossing in Cary. In 2015, the town of Morrisville did extensive work on Morrisville Parkway. Drivers were encouraged to use 25 miles per hour residential Crabtree Crossing Parkway to Cary Parkway. The increased traffic was horrendous. Excessive speeding resulted in causing homeowners to place signs on their lawns, "Drive like your children live here." We had tailgating, long lines of cars, and illegal passing. The Cary police frequently moved flashing 25 miles per hour signs from one place to another, and signs warning drivers of pedestrian crossings. Nothing helped. Now you want to make this unsafe way of life for residents permanent and destroy our property Please don't improve, approve this extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Troy. Mr. and Ms. Ford, and then Mr. Woodard.
Ms. Ford is part of our community. My name is Barry Demore, and I represent the Kelton Square Condominium Association, which there are about, let's see, there's three of us, there were four of us here before, 27 homes in this community, and we just border onto Crabtree Crossing. All of us are very concerned about this Crabtree Crossing extension, for all the reasons which were stated earlier. I love that film at the beginning, by the way, that was excellent. This makes no sense at all from a safety perspective. This community was not designed for that kind of, of use. Earlier, I was very encouraged to hear the concern for safety regarding the parking outside. Obviously, you folks are concerned about safety. This is crucial, guys, really. Okay? Safety, safety, safety. One other small point, eight and a half million bucks? Why? What is the benefit? Don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demore.
Mr. Demore, could you please state your actual address in Kelton Square, please?
Yeah, sorry. I live at 1001 Kelton Cottage Way in Morrisville.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, sorry.
So next, I have Pamela Wright. Okay, thank you. Ruth Dobson Torres.
Thank you. I'm Ruth Dobson Torres. I'm representing myself and my husband, Victor Emilio Torres. We live and reside at 100 Pember Place in Morrisville, and I'm just going to read, because I'm a little nervous up here in front of everyone. My husband and I agree with others adamantly opposed to the Crabtree Crossing extension, who have stated that the extension would create a popular new commuter and commercial thoroughfare due to driver behavior that is increasingly becoming influenced by in-car and mobile GPS-enabled applications. Without doubt, such a new thoroughfare would have detrimental consequences for many of us who live in Preston, especially in the Preston Grand neighborhood. My husband and I firsthand witnessed the terrible traffic congestion on the street directly next to our home during the Morrisville Parkway grade separation project. Similar congestion will obviously occur if the Crabtree Crossing extension is allowed, and such congestion will likely impact the property value of our home in an extremely negative way. For example, we would not have chosen to purchase our home in its current location if we had known that the congestion that we experienced during the Morrisville Parkway grade separation was going to become a permanent reality. We are asking members of the Planning and Zoning Board and the entire Morrisville Town Council to heavily weigh other options before making a decision to directly link our family-oriented residential community street to a freeway extension. I am a native North Carolinian, you might detect a little bit of that in my accent, and it was, I loved hearing Laura, her remarks on California, but I echo so much of what's been said, and the statement again from us, but I just don't think that this, I think it's a commercial problem, I don't think it will be solved by cutting through a neighborhood, and I don't think it's going to be for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Tom Wright.
Right, right.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did you call Ron Woodard earlier?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So should I wait, or...
No, please go ahead. I'm shuffling multiple pieces of paper, so...
Well, that's okay. Well, greetings, and thank you for listening to my point of view. My name is Ron Woodard, and I actually live in Cary, 208 Lewiston Court, 27513. I strongly oppose the Town Hall Drive extension and the Crabtree Crossing extension. I think we all know the only real purpose of this project is to send traffic onto Crabtree Crossing as a cut-through to Cary Parkway. Crabtree Crossing is a residential street, as has been noted. Turning a residential street into a thoroughfare after homes have been bought and then ruin our Preston neighborhood is just wrong. This extension would create, of course, safety issues for residents with this huge increase of traffic. And I want to just repeat something that, because I contacted the town of Cary just to get their point of view, because I know the two towns work closely together. And Mayor Weinberg replied to me and encouraged me to show up tonight, and he said, "As for Cary, Crabtree Crossing is not designed as a thoroughfare, and Cary would not benefit from this connection." Personally, I believe that the only ones who benefit are those who are leaving RTP and traveling through Cary and Morrisville. I couldn't say it better myself. The answer, of course, is to fix thoroughfares designed for this kind of traffic. Also, the current intersection at Crabtree Crossing in Morrisville Parkway functions well now, and I also recommend you leave it alone. Thank you very much for listening to my point of view.
So I have Mr. Tom Wright. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to Jim Matsco.
Matsco?
Matsco, thank you.
My name is Jim Matsco. I'm, I'm here representing myself and my wife. Live at 106 Hampton Pines Drive, Morrisville. And today, I spoke with three of the residents on our street, and they're all opposed to this project. And the concern that I heard today was with property value. They moved into the area, and they're concerned that as soon as word gets out that it's even a possibility that this road could connect to NC 147 and the Triangle Expressway, it would cause our property values to drop. One of the men I talked to, his wife's a Realtor, and she acknowledged that that's the case. Some years ago, I guess it was 2009, when this issue came up before, I was assured that the issue with extending Crabtree Crossing was a safety issue so that the fire department could get their vehicles down in time to service the south end of Morrisville. And the proposal was to make that into a greenway and to allow a bridge so that the fire department could get one of their vehicles across Crabtree Creek in a safe way. It would be a protected area, and, and that was my assumption. I figured that when a decision is made, it's finished, and it's been complete, and it's been discussed. Nothing has changed, and there's no advantage to this expressway, or this road extension up to the expressway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matsco. Change of pace, is Margaret Broadwell in the audience? Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I appreciate your service to the town of Morrisville. Thank you. I am Margaret Broadwell. I reside since 1984 at 109 Stella Court here in Morrisville, when Morrisville was less than 300 people. And I've served, as some of you know, as the first lady mayor in Morrisville and a total elected official for 14 years on Town Council and part of the Planning Board at one point.
That was the most important part.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course. I'm here representing not only my family, but the other families, approximately 25 or more families in Greenwood subdivision, which was the first recorded subdivision in Morrisville, created first in 1976. I, again, moved here officially in 1984 as a member of that community. I know most of my neighbors, and due to requests and suggestions from some in Morrisville, I should recreate a new petition, which I believe you have in front of you, that I've delivered to you tonight by your secretary, from some of the families and property owners that live in my community. This petition, I will suggest to you, is still growing. It depends on how much time I have to get out of my neighborhood, but no one has refused to sign it. Everybody has thanked me for coming by to share what's going on, because they don't pay attention. They're involved in their daily life like all of us, and most of them don't know what the latest is that Morrisville is doing. They don't participate as much as you and I have done. The petition, for the public record, says, "We, the citizens, taxpayers, and property owners of Morrisville NC, by signing our names herewith, do solidly object to a permanent road thoroughfare connecting Green Drive and Clements Drive, Morrisville NC. We believe it serves no useful public purpose, would be a wasteful use of the public monies, and would seriously denigrate our subdivision community by putting at risk the safety of our children, cause unwanted noise levels, and cause a bottleneck of traffic both at Aviation Parkway and Clements Drive, and Green Drive, and Chapel Hill Road, especially at peak traffic hours. We also believe that the unanimous public pledge to remove this shown connection on the transportation plan by the previous Morrisville Town Council, which was after public comment and previous petition on this same issue was presented, should be finalized and supported by action of the present Morrisville Town Council, now that the transportation plan is under review for updates to the plan." There's 26 names on this petition currently, and of course, I was sitting on the Town Council when this issue surfaced a number of years ago. It was, again, by unanimous pledge, the Town Council, even though I, to, to remove this from the transportation plan, when the plan comes back for review, which now it's coming back for review. But I appreciate your service and consideration, and I know you'll do the honorable thing and recommend, and your good common sense way to take this off the plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broadwell. I think I'm just going to go ahead, have the next person in line, and I'll try and find you on the sheet, so would you like to go ahead? So would you like to go ahead? If you would give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Love. I live at 760 Crabtree Crossing Parkway, and I'm definitely against turning Crabtree Crossing into a major thoroughfare. I'm probably the only one here that can remember when 54 had about the same traffic that Crabtree Crossing has today. And certainly, what needs to happen is 54 needs to be upgraded. That's the solution to the overall problem, and getting rid of the grade crossings over the railroad will make a big difference. If you're going to spend money, spend them, or you'll solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
I'm Charlie Nguyen. I think you'll probably be able to hear me from my voice, 1164 Crabtree Crossing Parkway. I do oppose the extension of Crabtree Crossing. I'd just like to double-click and say I was aligned with everything that pretty much has been said tonight, but I would go one step further. My house faces Crabtree Crossing, and the landscape medians, I've gone out and picked a young lad up, and this has happened in the last five years, that was going so fast he went through a tree in my front yard. And I would tell you, and I appreciate the Morrisville Police, because they come sometimes and stay there, when the Morrisville Parkway was being built, they couldn't be there enough. I'm walking, I have two dogs and an electric fence, so it, from a safety standpoint, it really does not make any common sense. I haven't looked at all the plans, and I was here tonight just to say that. Also, I'm in the medical and the finance business, and it also does not make any sense to degrade your own tax revenue to degrade my property value. So to me, that doesn't add up. You know, you're going to take your tax base and bring it down to help some commuters from Cary or the park. So I oppose the Parkway, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patty Chang. I live at 304 Millet Drive in the Carpenter Park, Single Family Homeowners Association, off of Morrisville Carpenter Road, and I'm a member of the Morrisville Board of Adjustments. In looking at this draft comprehensive transportation plan, there's a couple of multimillion-dollar projects that I find have never been fully vetted by local residents. So it tells me that was prepared by transportation experts who do not actually live in Morrisville. They don't know the history, the distinct neighborhoods, the cultural ambience of different communities in our town. The 147 connector to Town Hall Drive that I've never heard anyone in Morrisville ask for is referenced in this document in several places. And on page 3-9, that's a $57.85 million project connecting 147 and 540 directly to the residential communities in Town Hall Commons. Just a few months ago, I had a Town Council member and a developer tell me that it would never happen, never heard it referenced until it shows up in the comprehensive long-term plan. And you really need to consider how this will affect the well-acclaimed elementary schools in this area, as well as the residential communities. You've heard a lot about Crabtree Crossing. I am scheduled to ride in the Tour de Fem in two days, which is a all-women's bike ride that goes through Preston on Crabtree Crossing, and we turn at Morrisville Parkway. This is my fourth year doing it. I do the 15-mile version. We're talking about hundreds of women going down that road. And it's something that really needs to be considered before we throw in some lines into a long-term plan. I also live in a community where the four, the road is about to become four lanes due to a lot of work that has been done to make sure that the bottleneck at Morrisville Carpenter Road is improved. But the information about how our local neighborhoods will be effective have not been communicated well to the individual communities. There's a lot of people in Preston Creekside, in my neighborhood, in Morrisville, in Carpenter Park, single-family homes, who have no idea that the main primary entrance to our neighborhood will not be able to, we will not have left turns at our primary entrance. And that really needs to be better communicated to get feedback from local residents. I've heard it, but it wasn't ever said that was the final plan. Just to have it buried into these long-range documents is really not enough, and we need to work better on those implementation, the implementation of the current plans that have already been funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chang.
So I'm Christina Lindros, and I live on 155 Prestonian Place in Morrisville.
And I'm Peter Lindros, same address.
My hubby.
We oppose the extension of Crabtree Crossing. We live off of Rainbrook, and I'm also a member of the HOA Board of Directors for 82 Houses over in Preston Grand. And a lot of people, we have several other board members here tonight, too. We feel that, having gone through the experience when the bridge, the train bridge was built back, it took me 15, 20 minutes to get out of my driveway because it was so backed up, and the pollution that came with it, it's just not acceptable. So thank you very much.
And we know that we are going to have a lot of development, and we live in a wonderful community here in Morrisville and Cary. And I think we all want to keep it that way. And development is good when it is good, but I don't feel that this will be good for us. So I really oppose this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lindros.
Good evening. My name's Steve Groh, and I represent MOM. And MOM lives at 742 Crabtree Crossing Parkway. My wife and I live in Cary and have been in Cary for 26 years, and I regularly commute to North Raleigh, but I don't use Crabtree Crossing. I actually use Davis Drive up to McCrimmon Parkway. And I go through the disaster that is McCrimmon Parkway and Town Hall Drive almost every day. And it's frankly, to make an extension of Crabtree Crossing Parkway into that corridor is, it's just a terrible idea. I mean, not to offend anybody who had the idea, but it's just really a terrible, it's a terrible idea, because that right now, I know there are probably, although we don't seem to get a lot of the ideas and the plans, but there are probably plans to expand that intersection and McCrimmon Parkway over to 54, which is a great thing, but it's been a long time coming. 54 is a disaster, we all know that, anybody that's driven there. So from a perspective of a commuter that goes through from 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning, almost every morning, it's just, that whole area is just going to be a disaster even further than it is today. And that's just another area of Morrisville that I ask the council members to really seriously consider and just put an end to this idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Marn, and I'm at 104 Prestonian Place. And there's not much more to say. Everyone has summed it up, and I'm vehemently opposed to the extension at Crabtree Crossing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marn.
My name is Susan Alvey. I live at 153 Prestonian Place, and I totally oppose the extension. I live in the Townhome community, if you're not aware of that. Where that is, during the high-traffic area when they were redoing the road, I literally could not cross the street. It was unsafe. So please oppose it.
Thank you, Ms. Alvey. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this topic? Thank you all very much. Please go ahead.
My name is Burgundy Wins, and I'm representing myself and my husband, and all the people before me have very aptly stated the reasons why we are against it. So please, I want you to register on my opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wins.
Please state your address for the record.
I'm sorry. 120 Hampton Pines Drive, which is a semicircle that has two exits or entrances to Crabtree Crossing Parkway. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak on this topic? We will, with the board's consent, we'll hold open our public comment session until the next meeting. But we'll move on now, I think, to, if there are any items that the board members would like to request more information from staff, any clarification, any more implementation details that we'd like to see by next month, now is the time.
We need to be sure we get those cost estimates, I think, that, make sure they're all right and get them up to date. We didn't have, I guess we have the consultant here tonight, but anyway, we need to, again, make sure that that draft is right. And I brought some more information on Crabtree Crossing tonight. I brought floodplain information. I put, I talked to you guys, the, I mean, people I go to church with, we pass each other on while you were walking your dog today on the golf course. Played golf together, Wayne. You know, my neighbors are in here. I walk every day. I understand what you're saying, and I've worked very hard. I feel like a little kid in school, and I feel like saying it's their fault, but I'm not there. But let me say that I hear what you're saying. I would wish you could have heard some of the things, and I wish we could have a full dialogue to hear some of the things that the staff and the plan, and you understood the process, but on page one, paragraph one or two, it was to engage the public. And apparently, we didn't do a good job of that to start with. We engaged the public by putting a plan out there that didn't say draft on it and failing to let you guys know that we do have options, and you have options, continue to have that. Once it gets from us, it goes to council, and believe me, as it been, someone said in our meeting last week, "Well, don't worry about this thing, there's only two or three people that ever look at it." That's not true. You guys looked at it and saw it, and you're speaking out about it. So I wanted to say that I've heard you, I've heard you before, that the best reason that I've heard from anybody was it was on the plan in 2009. I've researched it. The real quiz I can't figure out is when they built that portion to start with, why it was never completed, you know? I'm a railroad guy, and we always look at what the old timers did, and it was never completed to start with. And I think the reason it was never completed is because it harms the, it harms the wetlands, and it's very difficult to cross and be very expensive, so much so that I even suspect, Ben, that our probable cost on that structure to go across those wetlands might even be low, but I defer to the consultant on that. So again, thank you for your input, and we've heard you, and I've heard you, and I'll continue to say, hold that up. And I think we just need to revisit this again. We can't take a straw poll and do a tit-for-tat and say, "Well, it's okay for this one and that one." It's just not right. That's my input.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have any input for staff, anything you'd like them to prepare for next month? Aside from tonight's topic, which has obviously been mostly on Crabtree Crossing, what about the rest of the plan?
I still think, number one, the scenario planning was wrong. The reason it's wrong is because you guys had some bad assumptions when you did that, but you did it anyway, you used regional scenario planning. I think, I think, but that ship's already sailed, so I don't know that we can take it out of the process now, we've already spent the money doing the exercise, but I don't think it told us anything. I asked that we get somebody from Triangle J to meet with us, to explain to us, and that never happened, so we can't even know for sure. We're trying to reflect the regional plan, but we've never had anybody talk to us that actually works on the regional plan. And the other thing is prioritizing it. I don't think the way you guys prioritized it is the right way to do it. I think we don't need to say long-term and short-term and use those kind of things. I think we need to prioritize what's most important. You know, Raleigh just finished their election, and I've talked to candidates who are going to be in our election, and when they meet with citizens, they say, "What's wrong?" And invariably, they'll be told congestion. That's what people talk about in this town. They don't like congestion. But at the same time, whenever we try to figure out a way to fix it, well, I want you to fix it, but as we all know, the nimbic term are not in my backyard. So I think we need to understand that we need, we do have to make some tough decisions, and for that reason, we need to, as I said in the last meeting, be data-driven, just not say long-term, short-term. I know Benjamin has told us that if we, you know, we don't want to preclude that sometimes Campo has money for sidewalks or other modes, and if we don't put it on our plan and we rank it as down the list, then we might run the risk. But if it's a plan, it needs to be a plan, and it needs to be a workable plan, and that's just not an exercise on putting lines on paper.
Thanks, Greg. Lee?
Are we making general comments?
What I was really aiming for was to give some guidance to staff and to make sure we have the right information that we need next month, which is when we're going to discuss the plan, I think, in more detail.
I would say the only thing that I think you brought tonight, like the 147 connection, I mean, is that, I think that's on our, it's shown on there, but that's not really anything to do with our purview, correct? So that's.
Correct.
It's only for informational purposes, only maybe that could be noted so that there's kind of less confusion there?
And that's one of the things we've talked to our consultants about, is clarifying the committed projects that are shown on there and that they're committed not necessarily by the town, but by other agents.
Like, that's literally, I mean, other than we could lobby against it, that's out of our control.
Right. I mean, at this point, it is a committed project funded by NCDOT. We felt the need, we felt that we should include it on the plan so that our citizens and people and business owners who look at the plan and developers are aware of the project. We certainly could take it off, but at this point, it does not appear that NCDOT is not going to build it. Because it.
Yeah, I know there's been back and forth, but yeah, I just, you know, people look at this in a vacuum, and they don't know the history, that, you know, it was on and off and on whatever that the DOT's done. I just want to make sure that that's, you know.
So I would say just clarifying the scenario planning so that we can accurately see without these extensions included, what the future of traffic looks like to the best of our prediction capability, and we understand the full repercussions of that when we make decisions. I think that's just, you know, so I mean, maybe in our next month's meeting, as we discuss more in detail, what's, what those scenarios are, what those traffic estimations are, just kind of go into more detail of what that means without some of these highly contested extensions as a part of that plan. Just make sure we're focusing on that particular scenario.
Mr. Taylor, just to make sure that I'm fully understanding you, so basically, take all committed projects, the projects that are funded are going to be built?
Yep.
And clearly go over, if that's all that's going to occur in this area, what are roads going to look like? Is that?
Committed, committed projects plus potential other projects, potential other improvements that we've been discussing and talking about, you know, intersection, whatever else it may be, non-committed projects that are likely to get funded because of the need, and then minus these contested extensions.
So minus the Green.
Green Drive and.
Which, that's so local that wouldn't have impacted our model, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then minus the Crabtree Crossing extension? So those are the only two? Okay.
To go back on 147 again, Ben, the proposal for 147 seems in my mind to have fluctuated between continuing to McCrimmon or having a T-junction and going on to an extension of Little Drive. What's the current state of play on that?
At this point, I don't really know. At this point, I don't really know. NCDOT has not really started their end-up design work on the project yet. They've done some initial pre-design work, from what I understand, that I've not been privy to. All I do know for certain right now is that they've run a couple, they've done a couple of traffic forecasts to look at how many vehicles will use the road and what it would do to surrounding roads. And they've done a couple, because the first one they did showed extremely heavy impacts, but they also showed it as a 65 mile per hour road coming right into McCrimmon Parkway. And so they, as a follow-up, they redid the traffic forecast with having it come into McCrimmon Parkway. It's more of a local boulevard-type street, 35 mile per hour speed limit, to see what the impacts of that would be. I don't, but I have not seen the study, so I don't know what the outcome is, other than that it, having it come in as a lower-speed road did decrease some of the traffic impacts on the surrounding road network. However, there are still some concerns at some intersections. As far as the alignment of it, have not heard anything. We have a hotspot study that was done several years ago that provided data on what a couple of different alignments may do. It did not make a recommendation one way or another, it was just really to provide some data. At this point, all, from what I've heard, DOT is still planning to have it aligned down to McCrimmon Parkway. However, I have heard through the grapevine in passing that RTP may be interested now and, or may be willing to look at extending Little Drive from Davis over to the extension that would provide another backdoor entrance or exit off of it. But I'm not aware of those, where those discussions are, if there's been a definitive decision made at this time. Most of that will be done as DOT starts their end-up design work, which I expect will probably be in the next year or two, based on when it's funded.
Could I ask a question, follow-up question? But there's an alternative tied into Dave's Drive, right?
That was what the hotspot study looked at, but the hotspot study was not funded by NCDOT. It was funded through Campo, and certainly DOT was involved, and they have that information. But from every, I have not heard that they, that they're currently looking at that as an option. Depending on the ultimate design of the road and the environmental permits they have to go to, they may have to study that option again officially as part of the project. I imagine they probably will. I think it's a big enough project that'll probably have to go through what they call the merger process, where they get all the environmental agencies involved, and it's a multi-agency process to go through and do an environmental impact assessment on the project. So if they do have to do that, which I'm assuming they will, then they would have to study at least two or three alternatives and not be able to go in with one alignment. With that said, I don't, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to go with a different alignment.
I got it. So there's basically, it sounds like there's almost no chance that it will not connect to McCrimmon. Whether it connects to Little is in addition to that?
At this point, that's what I'm, that's what I know. But again, haven't really had, haven't had a chance to have much discussions, and DOT really hasn't started a whole lot of work on it or told anyone much about it.
Because that would weigh into the Crabtree Crossing thing, because if that wasn't connected, of course, that would be a lot fewer commuters.
Yeah.
And I would actually like to hear, you know, even from public, you know, obviously, a lot of people here tonight through the public comments, you know, if we, if we took the connection from 147 and that idea of a highway coming all the way down to Morrisville Parkway, if that was out of the picture, right, and we were just simply connecting Morrisville, our citizens on the north side of Morrisville, who actually are, many of them in favor to having better access to the south part of Morrisville, where their kids go to school, and where we have these public facilities as well, you know, what, what impact that has on, on the overall opinion of the connection, you know?
I will say that when I, I was spoken to the consultant earlier this week in our early set down, and so several hours, she's spoken to some of the key points of the plan. And one of the comments that I made to the consultant was, you know, if Crabtree Crossing was to stay on there, that there needs to be a policy statement that clearly states that no consideration of extending the road or building the road, you know, if it were to remain on there, could occur until such extent that we definitively knew what was happening with 147. It completely changes the scope of what the road could or could not be. And so that was one of the statements that, you know, we were asking the consultant to clearly articulate that if it were to stay in the plan, that it needed to have several items, some of which we've talked about in the past, is really studying some of the intersection improvements associated with it. But we really need to know what is happening at 147, because that completely impacts Town Hall Drive, it impacts McCrimmon, Morrisville Carpenter, or Crabtree Crossing, you know, and I can go down the line with the roads. So I think that just needs to be extremely clear, you know, in the plan, again, if it stays.
And again, I think some of the options that had been discussed by staff previously about, you know, no access into Crabtree Crossing from, from coming, from the southbound direction, right, for people coming through that area, you know, I don't know, I don't know that anyone's had, you know, access to some of those comments that have been thrown out there, even, even speed reductions potentially through Crabtree Crossing, whatever it is to keep, preserve the neighborhood feel, preserve the neighborhood traffic, and minimize the impact. I mean, there are some things that were thrown out there as options.
That is correct, and that was another component of the conversation that I had with the consultant on Tuesday. And it was, I felt the, it had these intersection statement section, you know, intersection improvements, and I thought they were vague. You know, that can mean many things. Some of them had no signal, some of them currently have signal. And I was like, you know, what does this mean? You know, we needed more information before we could really make any intelligent decisions as to what that meant. So that's something else I've already tasked the consultant with, is to really hone in what defined improvements. Like I said, signal could be one, left, right, and right out, the other leftovers, I mean, the list can go on, you know.
And even better clarify what, what parts of that we have control over versus DOT making those, those decisions for the town, right?
Okay, that's a good point. I'll make sure that's added.
Could I follow up on his question quickly? You said that there's going to be a traffic circle put on Town Hall Drive right here.
That is correct.
You told the citizen who told me that the intersection at Morrisville Parkway and Crabtree Crossing was eventually going to be a no-left turn. Now, I don't know what you meant by that, but that's what she conveyed to me. So I might second.
Since I was firsthand part of the conversation, this is what was said. I said that when we look at road extensions like Crabtree Crossing, you know, I, I 100% recognize the concern. You know, as if there's, there's a Morrisville picture, and there's an individual resident picture, and they're both equally as important. So kind of that's one of the first parts. Second statement was, if the extension, again, these are all based off of ifs, they're all lines on the map, they're all dots on the map, that if the extension is built, you would need to take a look at that intersection. One of the potential options to keep people from free-flowing heading south is to take a look at what it permits you to do. For example, you could do a left turn. Now, a left there would prohibit anybody from going straight. Once they got to that intersection, they would be forced to take a right, but that would allow residents on, depending on Morrisville Parkway, say, coming from Park West Village, to be able to take a left into their neighborhood. Those could be potential options that we would look at. Those are options, you know? You can put a median there, no leftover. I've had people ask me, what about traffic circles there? And I was like, well, traffic circles slows it down, they look great, but that still allows people to free-flow into the neighborhood. So I was looking at options that could make sure that we can mitigate it as much as possible if the connection's built. That's what the conversation was about. And I've even said images of other places of things, say, just throwing out ideas, not saying any of it would occur. These are ideas of things that you can do at intersections.
Okay. We need to be clear, though, because people are afraid of the Crabtree Crossing extension. And if it were mitigated, that may or may not allay their fears. But we need to say that we don't know what's going to happen, or we need to either say, this is what we're going to do at that intersection, to make it crystal clear.
With all due respect, you were not part of any of my conversations.
I understand that.
And so my conversations have relayed that multiple times.
With all due respect, I was a victim of your conversation. You're right. And you need to make sure that that's conveyed at all times.
I think I'm going to cut off that conversation right there.
Thank you, I apologize.
And I would like to take a short recess. It's about 8 o'clock. My apologies to the people who are here for the next item, but we'll take about a 10-minute recess. We'll get back to our meeting. Thank you all for your patience here. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. And if I had an agenda in front of me, I could tell you which number it was. Thank you. Jump to number eight. Elliot, your first time, and I promised that we wouldn't be too tough on you.
Thank you. Good evening. Just want to thank everybody for their patience. I'm presenting Agenda Item 2017-299-0, Request for Amendments to the Future Land Use Plan Map and the Zoning Map. The applicants, Terry and Michelle Wells, are requesting amendments for approximately 0.7 acres of land commonly known as Zero Wilson Road, located in the vicinity of Fairbanks Road and Flip Trail. The subject property outlined here in red is specifically known as Wake County PIN 0754-79-6300. The property is currently located within the Town of Cary's extraterritorial jurisdiction. However, the property is not contiguous with Cary's corporate limits. If the property therefore was annexed into Cary, it would be considered a satellite property. And in accordance with General Statute 160A-58.1.1.2, no point of the satellite property's corporate limits can be closer to another city. Therefore, in order for the wells to get connection to water and sewer and start their home, they'll need to be annexed into Morrisville. Town Council will also vote on the annexation next month. And although it's not required by statute, the Town of Cary Acting Planning Director offered a written consent of the annexation. The property is currently zoned Town of Cary's R20 residential district, and the current land use is vacant. The requested Morrisville zoning district is low-density residential. In regards to comparison between the current and requested zoning districts, Cary's R20 residential primarily deals with half-acre, single-family detached lots. R20 permits a maximum density of 2.17 units per acre, a minimum area of 20,000 square feet, and a minimum lot width of 90, 90 feet. Morrisville's low-density residential district also primarily focuses on single-family detached properties. It permits a maximum density of 4.5 units per acre, a minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet, and a minimum lot width of 60 feet. The subject property is surrounded by single-family detached homes, as you can see in the aerial shot here, and the intended use by the wells of a single-family house will fit well with the character of the residential area. Town staff recommends approval of the land use plan amendment and zoning map amendment requests based on the fact that the amendments are consistent with the stated purpose of the low-density residential district. Also, the intended use of the single-family detached home, as I mentioned, fits with the character of the surrounding residential area. Both of these requests are legislative and general discretionary. The board can recommend approval of the requests or recommend denial of the requests. The PCB is asked to make a recommendation to the Town Council on the following items and in the following order. Also, in accordance with the newly amended General Statute 160A-383, if you are recommending approval, the statement of consistency found in the suggested action section of your briefing should be read and recorded in the minutes. And that is all I have for you. If you have any questions for myself, the Wells are also here and willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Elliot. Well, we do have a public comment session, so if anybody would like to speak on this topic, please come up to the podium here. And you would have gathered from the previous session that if you would give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Wilson. I live at 1728 Fairbanks Road, and I'll apologize in advance, I'm fighting a cough, I'm hoping to make it through without that. But I'm here tonight as the president of the Woods at Fairbanks HOA, representing the community there. And I think, actually, given the mass exodus, we were left pretty much with just our community, but I'll just simply ask everybody to stand just for identification. Yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So in knowing that the future residents are here as well, I just want to say, you know, welcome on behalf of the community. So it was important to me to note, we've been in a number of these sessions, given all the communities popping up in our area. It's important to note, before we begin to say anything else, that this is not intended to be a flat-out opposition or disagreement or complaint or anything of that nature. It's just a basic statement of concern, and just want to get some clarifying notes, so to speak. As the town records probably show, our community has been heavily involved in discussing all of the bubbling areas and road extensions in our area. Usually, 98% of our community participates in these items. And actually, in, directly in line with that, the day that the sign was posted, I received six calls. I got 87 messages in three days, and then there was like a huddle of 30 people in a living room, one of our gracious residents. That might sound like a lot, but let me just point out real quick, just like when I put on my corporate hat, you know, opposition is not a negative thing. It is a representation of an emotional investment, and you want people to be emotionally invested in their community. So it's not a bad thing, you know, even though it sounds like a lot. So our inquiry, let's get to it. It's three-fold, because again, I said it's just basic concern. The first item is conformity. So this is a new neighborhood, obviously, Woods at Fairbanks, it's less than two, two and a half years old. A lot of individuals have invested a sizable sum of money in living in that area and building their families there and whatnot. And we just, because this is obviously at the, in our community, you could say it's not, but it's at the end of our road. You got to drive through the entire community, and it deadens right there. I actually own the house right beside it. As it sits there, we just want to understand, you know, what's there in regards to creating that continuity and that conformity, so to speak? Like, we've got a number of HOA bylaws that we live by in regards to like the types of trees that we plant, and, you know, not parking on the road and things of that nature. And we just want to discuss what options are there to ensure the best interest of that. We also had some additional interests specifically in discussing the retention pond usage, just because this isn't something that is in any of the rezoning documents, by the way. Thank you for organizing it, it was very easy to read through everything. But it's not something that we could easily find and notate. So obviously, we assume that being built at the end of our road, it's going to flow into our retention pond. So we just wanted to know where we stand on the maintenance of that kind of stuff. In addition, I'm not confident I'm aware of the, because of where we reside, we're Town of Morrisville, City of Cary, so we kind of overlap. There were some questions on the mailboxes as well. So we moved to mailbox hubs, and we were told that that was a requirement for our area. So we were kind of like, okay, does that mean that the, that their mailboxes, we have to make room for it in our hubs and things like that? Will there just be a standalone mailbox? We wanted to talk a little bit about that. So those, honestly, those were our primary three things, was discussing just points of conformity and what options were there, discussing the stormwater retention pond and the mailboxes there. So that's pretty much it. And I just, I guess, in closing, because I understand this isn't a back-and-forth dialogue, the request is simply to stay a decision, just pending some basic conversation and understanding how this, how this plays out, so to speak, and what options are available. And I will yield the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak on this topic?
My name is Mike Montpetit. My address is 107 Carney Court. My home is directly next to the subject property, and I am here wearing three hats today. The first one is, I'm a board member with John for Woods at Fairbanks. The second hat I'm wearing is a neighbor that's adjacent to this, and actually, I was the first neighbor into Woods at Fairbanks, and I've been talking to the owners, the previous owners of this land for two and a half years. And the third hat I'm wearing is the listing broker. I was the real estate agent that had that property for sale under an exclusive right-to-sell listing agreement up until the point that, well, I met the two builders that were here, one builder and the other agent here. I walked the property with them, we talked about different uses for it, and they teamed up with a custom builder, Tingan Homes. And lo and behold, in the fourth or fifth month of the listing agreement, I was a little concerned that the owner said, we're not going to sell, would change of mind, so I went out of my agreement. A few weeks later, it's sold to the, our new neighbors. So from... So from a good neighbor's standpoint, I was just curious what the intentions were of using this land for and why nobody ever talked to us or why they circumvented the normal real estate process to build something. So even though it's a flag-shaped lot, it's a red flag to me that there is some things happened out of sequence and circumvented the normal process. I asked the Davises what their relationship is with the, how they discovered the lot, if it was through the builder. They said, "We know them from something, but we can't tell you." They couldn't tell me their names. Maybe they do go to church with them, I don't know. But my questions are like John's. Simple questions are, could you please show us what your proposal is for the property? In other words, we'd like to see what the lot will look like and what the house will look like and what the driveway will look like, since it is adjacent to our medium-density houses. And we don't want to see an improper transition from medium-density to low-density. You call it low-density, but really, you could have eight properties or six properties there if it's only 8,000 square feet. So we don't want to see a bait-and-switch where they end up putting a bunch of townhomes in there like they did in a famous case in Cary. I forgot the name of the street, Trimble Avenue. So we were just talking to City Council about that today. But the main question is, why couldn't they use the current zoning with Cary? Because if it's just one house on one big lot, why not do that? And then overbuilding can frustrate neighbors. And once you give your permission to approve something without any guidelines of how many homesites will be on there, it could be a problem. So in summary, I'd just like to be a good neighbor, start off on the right foot, if that's possible at this point, so that we can understand what they want to build. And if they want to be part of our HOA, we could invite them into there and show them our association things, and they would get the benefit of the signs, the retention pond, the mailboxes, and knowing that people will conform to certain set of standards rather than just building whatever they want. But anyway, we just asked to get more information before saying, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montpetite. Anybody else like to speak on this one?
Hello. My name is Michelle Wells, and this is my husband Terry. And we are the owners of the lot. And just want to give a little background on what we'd like to do. We're 20-year residents of Cary. We've raised our family here and have really had a wonderful experience. We're looking forward to building our forever home in Morrisville, one that we would retire to and live for the rest of our lives at. We have family that's here, my parents. They'll be living with us. We want to be able to take care of them. In terms of the concerns of the community, we absolutely want to have a uniform look to the neighborhood. We plan to invest quite a bit in our forever home and want to make sure that the investment is something that makes sense and fits in with the current look and feel of the community. We love the look and feel of the community. We have no issues with mailboxes or anything of that sort. So we are in the process of going through the design with our builder. We still have quite a bit of work to do, but it will be, you know, a ranch-style home, most likely with the craftsman look and feel that you currently have in your area. So I think there's obviously room for us to work together on that. We are happy to stick around after the meeting and answer any questions you may have. But this is a really important step in our lives, and we don't take this lightly. And it's something that's very important to us. So we appreciate the time here.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this one?
Hello, good evening. My name is Eduardo Tirtaraja. I live in 104 Carney Court. I have one question. Where is actually the entrance? Will it be on the Wilson Road or will it be the Fairbanks Road? Because that is very important according to my opinion. Because if it's in the Fairbanks Road, it will be the factor and integral part of our community, unfortunately. So that's one of my questions that I would like to have an answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Montpetite, Mike's wife, 107 Carney Court. And we do welcome you to our community. We're happy to have you part of us. The big concern that we have is the change in zoning. That Cary's zoning was one house for that area, and that's great. That's what we bought into. Changing to Morrisville's low-density, which is one house per 8,000 square feet, is a different mix. That's different. Keeping it for Morrisville's medium-density as what Cary has, one house per that section, absolutely fine. That's what I vote for. Keep it the same. It fits, it works, that's what we bought into. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Before we have the board discussion then, I'm going to ask Elliot, if you could, to come back up to the stand maybe. You may want to pull up some of the maps again. I don't like to encourage questions and answers, but you may have some answers to some of the questions, so we may as well listen to them.
Which map specifically?
Well, let's start with zoning. What is the current proposed zoning?
So the requested zoning would be low-density residential.
Right.
Which is what you're seeing surrounded there.
Okay. And can you give us an outline of, you know, what does that mean? How many dwelling units per acre?
So that's, for Morrisville's low-density, it's four and a half units per acre.
Right.
Okay. The current is R20 in Cary, and that's 2.17 units per acre. There's an uptick. Just to answer some of the zoning concerns, however, the reason why the recommended zoning was low-density versus medium-density, I think someone mentioned. Medium-density permits townhomes, whereas low-density does not. Also, low-density, the minimum's 8,000 square feet. However, our next zoning district in Morrisville is very low-density, which is 40,000. And considering the lot's only 30,500 square feet, so the logical choice there would be low-density. But yes, the idea was to maintain the single-family detached feel of the area. And if you go to medium-density, then you're also permitting possible townhomes. So that's why we recommend the low-density. And as far as keeping Cary's R20 district, because of that general statute that I mentioned, they have to be annexed into Morrisville. And so we have to apply a Morrisville zoning district, which is why they can't just maintain what they have right now.
And do we have an indication of where the entrance or the exit from the property would be?
Yep.
I'm going to guess it's under Wilson.
So because it's, here, let me go to the next. Because it's slightly an unusual-shaped property, I think the idea originally was to have a long driveway extending from Fairbanks down here, and the home would sit on this area here.
And that is their only public access that they have. They don't have any other access.
And then I think maybe with some help from Courtney, as well as having a minimum lot size, you know, four dwelling units per acre, there are other restrictions in terms of setback and so on. So is it at all feasible to have more than one dwelling unit on this lot?
So we have, every single new residential home has to be on a public street.
So I think the largest challenge is meeting our minimum lot with requirements and then having two lots on a public street unless other land is purchased and Gretchen Lane can be extended. And then you can potentially start to subdivide. But as it stands now, there's no way to really subdivide the parcel to even create more than one lot.
And that's because of the setbacks? You couldn't have two driveways parallel?
Well, part of it, the lot width. So if you look at the adjacent lots, there would be somewhat of a pull into that. I don't have the exact measurements up, but I suspect just by looking at it, you would not be able to meet the minimum lot width requirements along a public road frontage and subdivide the parcel without obtaining additional land.
The minimum lot width that's required is 60 feet. Just looking at it on our GIS system, it looks like that property only has a width of 70, 71 feet.
That's from east to west?
Yes.
Right.
As for rules and laws, you know, ordinances about neighborhood look and feel, I mean, it's not a property that was bought by the neighborhood when it was developed, right?
If I can jump in there.
Yeah.
This is a rezoning case. So strictly, we have to look at whether we can, well, annexation as well as rezoning. We have to consider, can we rezonate or not? We're not actually allowed to consider what's going to be built there.
Right.
Which is frustrating to no end as we.
Well, I was going to say, I think we're detached from that decision of whether it looks and feels like the neighborhood. That's not a part of even towns control, to some extent, right?
No, state legislators, certainly years ago, took away the ability for any town in the state of North Carolina to regulate aesthetics for residential development.
I think it was a question about mailbox accommodation. I don't think that's relevant, right?
So mailboxes, the postal service is the one that regulates. We have been told that no new post boxes can be put in, but ultimately, it's going to be up to the postmaster to determine whether or not they'll allow box here or they'll force them to get a PR box. That may be another alternative.
What about the retention pond?
So the size of the lot and the amount of disturbance by law, they are not required to have an individual detention pond on their site.
Because they've limited amount of disturbance.
Will that affect Fairbanks?
I don't know where the topography is going. But again, we have to adhere to laws. The laws say that they are not required because the amount of disturbance that most likely, we don't have a plan. But based off of every single lot that we have where a house comes in, they're all exempt from any type of stormwater regulations.
And so that means that once the permit is submitted, the town would not be able to say, no, this would cause more rain than us currently going to Fairbanks Road. To go to Fairbanks Road, and therefore, we would, the town wouldn't have any kind of influence on that whatsoever?
They'll have to put up, any kind of disturb, you're required to have self-fencing up. So they'll be required to do on-site rain-construction self-fencing. But outside of that, we don't have regulatory authority.
Thank you.
The authority actually goes to the county.
Right. I'm going to say, according to the county, right? You can't just do something that would adversely impact people downstream or hill, whatever, correct?
So there's personal property.
Right.
Separate, but from the regulatory standpoint, with regards to land disturbance, this would not trigger stormwater.
Rob, any other questions, comments? Lee?
The only sort of concern I've got is, I mean, obviously, there's another sort of couple of parcels there. And I mean, I guess it won't really matter with our consideration, but it certainly could impact that property in the future if Gretchen Lane was extended, you know, right beside that. But I guess that's not really.
We can't enforce parcels to combine as a condition of development or anything like that, so.
No, I mean, in the way the rules generally work, if you have a lot, you have a legal right to pull a building permit for any use that's permitted and it complies with regulations.
It looks like that particular lot would maybe not be permitted for any kind of use based on setbacks and things like that, the lot beside it on Gretchen Lane.
Are you talking the land that's located between kind of the red shape and Wilson Road?
Yes, like if someone was to buy all that, connect Fairbanks all the way up and connect Gretchen Lane to that.
Multiple lots there. There's not a lot in our shadowless image.
There's multiple lots out there.
That's an extraordinary thing to ask, but yes, go ahead.
So if this were approved, would it be possible?
Do you mind coming to the speaker so we can get you on record, please? Thank you, sir.
Mike Montpetite, 107 Carney Court. So if this were approved, would the zoning allow for, let's say it's 75 feet wide at Fairbanks, could 15 feet of that be used for a driveway on the low side that goes back to the forever home? And then another 60-foot-wide home be put on Fairbanks? So could there be theoretically two homes on this lot? Would that be acceptable?
We do not allow more than one home to be located on the lot. So you couldn't put two, if you're asking for two driveways and then two homes further back?
Yeah, one driveway and then, do you allow that? I know Cary doesn't allow it. We do a long driveway going back to somebody's.
So we no longer, we don't allow the creation of flylots anymore.
Flylots, yeah, that's right.
And we also only allow one home per lot.
Okay, that makes me feel better. Thank you.
Not a problem.
So we made an exception there, but I'm glad you feel better. Craig, any comments or questions?
Now, just a sidebar again. Is there adequate room at the end of Fairbanks for a turnaround for emergency vehicles and that kind of thing? Do we need to?
There's one there. Especially on narrowway, it was required to be installed. It's a temporary, you turn around, so if Fairbanks is ever extended, it can be removed. But there is one there that was required as part of that element.
Okay. And my second question, I should know this, but remind me what the Cat Atlantic guys are doing off Wilson Road? Is that backing up to this property or?
It is on the, if you're looking at the image, there's kind of the brownish color. Sorry, that's supposed to be the brownish, the tanish color. The tanish is all of the other land that Cat Atlantic is.
Okay. And the final thing is, where did we agree to put in the new, or where did the property owner agree to put in the new sewer line when we gave Cat Atlantic the approval?
When are they putting it in?
Yeah, where is it located, basically?
The sewer line is coming from Cary. Not, it won't be the sewer line that's serving this side, but the sewer line serving the other area, it's kind of tan. That's coming from Cary Parkway.
It's kind of hard to draw on here, but.
Got it.
But it is coming from Cary Parkway. It's coming north of there and heading south.
So these folks.
And it'll be shooting over to the west.
So these folks, they might know it already. There's no problem with them accessing the sanitary sewer, then, right?
They have spoken to the Town of Cary, but you'll have to, they'll have to answer that question if that wasn't pretty detailed.
Okay, all right. That suits me. Thank you.
I mean.
My first reaction to this was, maybe if everybody had just sat down and talked to each other, you wouldn't have had to be here with public comments. I hope that any questions are resolved in your minds, because I can't imagine trying to build a house and your neighbors are like, "Meh." Or your neighbors, you know, don't want to go down to that end of the street or something like that, not feeling welcome. I just thought, gee, maybe if everybody had sat together down, this could all have been worked out. But that was just my reaction.
It's a public service that we provide.
It is a public service, that's right.
So I'd like to know where the general statute was that governed that it had to be annexed by Morrisville. Where was that general statute when we needed it when the Morrisville Donut was created many years ago?
That I can answer, because I don't know when the Morrisville Donut was created. I mean, it is satellite integration regulations.
Not to get too terribly uptight, but satellites not meaning close, it's farther away. And the basic statute says, if it's not attached to the one where it's part of the ETA, but it's closer to the other one, the other one gets it. And that's in essence what happened here, in public, in terms.
Well, I view it as progress. You know, we are planning to take over Cary, so. The way to eat an elephant is one slice at a time.
Is this the first one in a long time?
One piece of it. One piece of the elephant at a time.
Yeah, I was going to say, is this the first one in a long time where we annexed Cary instead?
Can I ask one other question?
It's the only one we're not.
May I ask one other question? Ben, the connection, Wilson Road connection to Cary Parkway, help me out, where does that stand? Did we make it or not? Did we make it or not, or?
That, that's part of another project, the project in the tan across the road.
Right.
They are still moving along with that and are still planning to make that connection.
Okay, but this is, this property won't be affected by that, is that fair to say, or?
Well, it won't really be, it won't directly be affected, other than when they get out to Wilson, they'll, they would be able to go over to Cary Parkway.
Yeah, okay.
When the connection's made.
Got it, got it, okay, and because they don't have access to Wilson now, this is moot point, got it, understand.
So, any more questions or discussion? So, are we ready to consider a motion? If so, entertain a motion.
So, pretty to close the hearing, I believe it's still in it.
Thank you, Courtney.
You're welcome.
So, we will officially close the public comment session. Now, ready for a motion? We can approve, we can deny, we can defer.
What was the order? There was an order we had to do these in as well?
Yeah, it's very complicated.
If we want to motion to recommend approval.
You have to read all that in there.
We have to read that first.
Yeah, you gotta read all that in there.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Do you want to read that?
So, if I'd had a paper version, I could have given you the paper.
We could give you one as well.
Thank you.
Do you have to read the whole document?
Just the whole, the topic, you want to do it, I mean, that's the.
So, if you were in favor, you'd have to make a recommendation to approve, and then you'd have to basically read this. We are constrained by the general statute.
Okay, so this whole document, that has to be read, then?
Number two.
First you would read.
Just two. But number one, and number three, you can just reference the ordinance, but number two.
Okay.
You do need to read it in its entirety.
Okay. So, I guess everyone's waiting for me to do this, huh? Starting. So, I start by reading at number two?
Start with number one.
Okay.
And you would just make a recommendation or make a motion to either recommend approval or denial of resolution 2017-299-0-8, and that would be the motion for that one.
Okay, so I'd like to motion to recommend approval of resolution 2017-299-0-A of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the amendment of the future land use plan for property commonly known as Zero Wilson Road and located in the vicinity of Fairbanks Road and Flip Trail, LUP 17-01.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any discussion of that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. So, now we have to do a consistency statement, number two, right?
For this one, he'll basically follow the same pattern as before, but it's very important, the entire portion that's in parentheses, so I have the second paragraph where it says the requested zoning map amendment, to rezone, go through that, and all the way in, in public interest.
Are you exhausted, Rob, or would you like to make a motion?
I'm just a little confused, so.
If you read it verbatim, like.
Just read it verbatim.
You just know what your motion is, you'll be fine.
Okay, and I don't have to motion here.
You do have to do a motion as well, so it's, you know, make a motion to recommend.
Either approval or denial.
And then go through the resolution.
So, basically, what we're doing is, we're recommending a rezoning, and we're also recommending a change to the land use plan.
So, the first one was the land use plan, that was your first step.
This particular one is a consistency statement, and statute requires any board or council elected body that's making a recommendation on an ordinance change, which is a map or text amendment, has to be very specific in language of how it is or is not consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. You just can't make, it used to be able to say it is consistent, but due to recent case law or statute changes, we can no longer make that for law statement, we have to be very specific in admission.
Okay.
I apologize, it was very confusing, and I recognize that, but it should be a different change.
So, I'd like to motion that we recommend approval of resolution 2017-299-0-B of the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of the plan, the consistency review statement for proposed zoning map amendment for property commonly known as Zero Wilson Road and located in the vicinity of Fairbanks Road and Flip Trail, REZ 17-02.
And then start right where the mouse sits.
The requested zoning map amendment will rezone the subject property to the low-density residential LDR district and is consistent with the comprehensive plan because.
Yes.
All of it. The town of Morrisville Land Use Plan, as recently amended, recommends low-density residential LDR district zoning of the property, and low-density residential LDR district zoning is proposed. B, the requested zoning map amendment will promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region, as recommended by policy 1A in the 2009 land use plan. C, the requested zoning map amendment is consistent with policy 1E of the 2009 land use plan, as it, as it will promote detached residential land uses outside activity centers and in the context, and in context with surrounding uses. As a result, the zoning map amendment is consistent with the town of Morrisville's adopted plans. In addition, the requested zoning map amendment is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject property, and will result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and is therefore reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you, Rob. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Well, I think Lee was first, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried.
Okay, on this one, which, how much of this do we read? Do I read, potentially?
You just have to, you know, make a motion to recommend or denial of the ordinance, and really, you just have to state the ordinance number.
Okay. So, I'd like to recommend, I'd like to motion to, I motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2017-299-0 of the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for property commonly known as Zero Wilson Road and located in the vicinity of Fairbanks Road and Flip Trail to the low-density residential district, RAZ 17-0. Keep going, is that good?
I think that's good, sir.
That's good, okay.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Rob.
Happy that, all the sort of.
Thank you, all of you. Which is a particularly difficult one for your first presentation, thank you.
I'm impressed.
So, we're gonna move on to item nine, which is staff comments.
Ever again.
Courtney.
Okay, so the first item I have, it's kind of two parts.
I see we're here for the larva month.
The first part is our yard of the summer, or yard of the season, it's the summer.
You might want to just pause for a second. You're welcome to stay with the rest of our meeting, or you're welcome, welcome to find a space in the lobby. Courtney, go ahead.
And so, it's the summer yard of the season, and this theme was sustainability, with a focus on wealth, life support, conservation, and pollution mitigation. We had one entry, and it was at 104 Button Court, and oddly enough, this was the winner last year for our sustainability, so for two years in a row, they have been chosen as the winner, because again, there weren't any other entries, so there's no official.
We get to see a picture?
Absolutely.
Okay. I can just don't see how, oh, they got some solar panels.
So, true, I mean, they have solar panels, and they have electric.
Electric car.
So, they do have both, so that is our winner. But the other part that I really wanted to talk about, too, is just the whole entire yard of the season process. Currently, we hold it four times a year. Traditionally, most of the entries are made by staff, very rarely do we actually get a resident provide an entry, however, once we do get all those entries in, we do have really good support, once we post them through social media and get votes to limit down the number of entries to kind of like the top picks, and then y'all vote from there. So, we've been exploring how to kind of reframe the program potentially, and this is really up to this board as to how you would or would not like to reframe it, but staff was talking internally, and we were really wondering, could we not turn this into something that's more oriented around the litter, with, you know, decor, festive decor, you know, around Christmas time, when we have multiple yards in the area, and if we wanted to turn it into a festive theme, and instead of having $425 prizes, have one $100 prize, but really, just wanted to get the board's input, because ultimately, this decision is yours to make, and where you would like to go, we can continue, you know, with the yard of the season four times a year, it just felt that this has been very successful, and didn't know if they're willing to re-pro our normal retool it.
So, I'll turn it back over to the board, and can I get your thoughts?
Okay. I mean.
I'd be for just the annual, like, winter thing, it's a lot of effort, you know, and most of the input comes from you guys going, oh, that's a nice house or something, and if there's not going to be more public input than that, I think, well, let's just do it once a year, have a nice big prize, maybe if people hear $100, they'll pick up their ears, and I'd be for doing it once a year, the holiday theme.
Craig?
Yeah, I would endorse the once a year. The only caution I would have was making sure we don't pick a season or a name that is not inclusive, Christmas might not be the best, so keep that in mind.
Lee?
I was thinking, maybe, what if you did two? I mean, I, you know, because you're gonna really throw all your eggs in the basket of, like, crazy Christmas decorations, potentially, I mean, it's gonna be honest, it's holiday, I mean, although you could obviously include Diwali, some people put lights up for that, and maybe extend it through the whole season, but I mean, at least if you had, you know, maybe if you did two, you'd have one that was sort of concentrating on, like, beautifying the landscape or whatever, and then, like, in the spring or whatever, and then you could have the one in the winter, which is more gonna be focused on lights, I would assume, or other decorations, I don't know. But I agree about the inclusiveness, because there are a lot of people that put up stuff, you know, beyond just Christmas.
I think everyone celebrates New Years.
I take my stuff down about New Years, but.
Well, I mean, you have, you have an open period, and it includes a lot of the known religious holidays of the winter season, including New Years, and at the end of the season, whatever we dictate it being, you know, you choose your winner, I think that would be.
I mean, if it's general holiday decor, I mean, if you expanded it over to, I mean, that's not like a parade in here, but you know, if you really do, and you have to understand, some of the festival lights, they change, those several holidays, you know, are based off of.
Yes.
Your solstice, and so there's a little, there's some changes in that, but if you made it longer, I mean, you could, in theory, pick up Diwali, Halloween, we need to pick up a lot and capture a lot.
That's true.
You know, if you kept it open.
You know, for a three-month period and captured, you may have more, but then you also have, it's harder for us to market, and I understand, we're putting blast out through social media, so a hard-hitting two-week period or a three-week period, even a four-week period is much better than a three-month period, so then that kind of gets back to Mr. Lunt, who's more involved, they do two then, I mean, we had a ton of entries in holiday decor last year, I will admit that a fair amount of them, I don't know the percentage, but I would say it was like 25% residents, 75% police departments, they jarred on the night, married and take pictures, and we can ask for some help.
That's smart.
And that's one that haven't had a lot of entries, as far as they were just randomly able to take pictures at different places and something else, you know, but again.
We do have some big light displays in town, there's no doubt.
Well, how would you judge somebody's Diwali presentation in October versus a Halloween versus a Christmas?
There's, if you did the general holiday decor, you know, I mean, some have limited lights, some are over-the-top lights, you know, people have year-round lights around here, you know, it's, it's completely uphill discretion, we're just tossing out ideas, and we will go in any given direction, we will stay at our, you know, current path, we just were trying to recognize that a lot of work and time that enters into this for very low results at this point.
Yeah, I think it's a real shame, but, you know, the heritage, the history is because we absorbed the Community Appearance Committee, and this was the last thing that they, I mean, the last little bit of that community disappearing, so I personally would like to try and persevere, at least maybe pick up Lee's comment, that perhaps there's a yard appearance in May, June, that sort of timeframe, where things are at their best, but I, I don't know, I think there's a, there's a risk that we, you know, we get an awful lot of tacky, you know, who's got the biggest, loudest, scariest, it's not necessarily community appearance.
Well, and if you think about it, too, if you're holiday, it's, the lights look good at night, but during the day, actually, you might even say they don't look good, and they don't improve the look of things, I mean, you would just sort of be trading, I don't know, I mean.
Well, there's deflated Santa.
Yeah, exactly, big candy canes on the ground.
So, I mean, I'm sympathetic to the work, but. Anybody want to chime in there?
We could do most sparkly, that would cover a lot of things.
Well, I, I understand, you know, you don't get a lot of response, and I guess it takes, it takes time, I know it takes you guys time, it takes you away from other things, and I appreciate that, I just, and I agree to anything that you're, not to spoil something is, you know, by saying this, but if you're not getting a rate of return, and you're, you can't market it, then I say, maybe it's not worth it, but, but there again, I certainly hadn't been involved, didn't put any time into it, other than sitting up here and looking at the pictures that were, were sent before me, so I can't say that, address those things, but.
Maybe the question is, do we continue it at all?
Well, that's the risk. Can we go ahead with, you know, your idea or your staff's idea of the best holiday decorations, but we'll still have something in the spring?
We can do whatever you want.
I mean, again, this was something.
Every month?
You said was like kind of a, I think the last few things that came out of the Community Appearance Committee, you know, when that committee was holding to this, so it's really 100% your program, just wanted you to know that the success of the program.
It's the bait, though.
I mean, I'm not saying I think that's great, you know, Button Road, every single year participates, you know, and I think that's awesome, so I mean, we do have people that are doing it, but we don't have 25 people that are doing it, you know.
So, we need to somehow help you promote it more.
You know, and we have, we've been putting out for social media, so we've been trying since, we have a person that's wonderful at what they do here, it is social outreach, you know, so we tried going that route, the scene, and it didn't yield any different results.
Have they put it in, like, the newsletter?
People were clicking, you know, I forget how she voted it, but basically, the pictures that were liked the most, if I remember correctly, the ones that were brought to you, so that worked, so they were given options, they participated.
So, there's some interest.
But.
Email blast, all the HOAs.
Yeah.
They did that also?
And none of that really worked.
Really? Did they put it in the newsletter? I can't remember if I ever saw anything in there or not.
When we. When we send it, so I didn't.
It could have gone, I don't know if it went out in the newsletter, it always goes out and next week Morrisville just email blast. Content-wise, it usually doesn't make the cut for the newsletter that gets mailed. But it definitely was through social media. So once we put it out there as, here to vote, great participation. But asking somebody to take the time and energy to take a picture and submit it, little participation.
And I think also people probably don't want to submit their own home. That, I mean, maybe some people do, but I know I wouldn't, you know, so that sort of limits, you've got to, most people are going to submit another home, you know, instead of their own, so I don't know.
We get a lot of, well, as soon as we get our many times from the owner.
Really? I guess I'm just not that proud.
All the hard work and energy, but.
Does any other, any other town do this or have you talked to your peers or?
This is not something I've talked to them about ever, if I was to be honest.
I don't think so, but I just thought.
Yeah, I don't know, but you know, other jurisdictions handle different things. I mean, typically you'll see HOAs, you know, do it to some more, we have things within
HOA. You know, you know, I'd say since this program started, the town's doubled in size, but I don't know that participation's doubled.
Yard sizes have probably halved in that same time. Well. Why don't we at least try the, you know, the next contest should be the holiday decorations?
Okay.
See what happens.
We'll do, so we're going to go with that one. Now, a question is, do you want us to try to increase the amount of the prize to see if.
I'm not sure that twenty-five dollars was a real incentive. I don't think fifty, fifty or a hundred would either.
I doubt that.
I bet you if you gave five thousand away, you'd have a lot of takers.
Get a great sign for your yard.
You'd have a lot of vote hacking if you did five thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred dollars is enough for a kid to take a picture of their house and submit it, probably. Not enough to cooperate at all. Okay, so we'll continue on to do the holiday month, we'll just do the same prize, same thing that we've done with the, because we've had holiday decor every year.
Do we want to then reprogram after that to see how it goes and have the conversation again?
I think so.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you. So back to your nine B.
Okay, so we have a new newsletter out for this month. It's actually, September was a pretty slow month with regards to approvals and applications. If you're a reviewer, it certainly wasn't a slow month, but we didn't have any new applications submitted and they're more to be approved by the staff level. As for council approvals, they approved the food hub contract to start construction of the food hub site and that's where the Western White Farmers Market will be located.
They started yet?
They have not started. The work that you see out there right now is actually a gas line and they're using it as a saving area. The fee schedule, we had to modify that because of state changes in state law with regards to the amount that we can charge for cell tower facilities. So we had to modify our fee schedule for that and.
It's more now, right?
No, the general public is now subsidizing installation of cell towers. That's a general rule. And then the sidewalk construction is, the council approved a local agreement with NCDOT for the sidewalk on Airport Boulevard. In other news, I think y'all are fairly well versed with all the public input that's going on with the transportation plan update, but we do have a new intern in our department, Jack Jin, he's a recent graduate of UNC Chapelville. So if you see a gentleman walking around town with a GPS in his hand on sidewalks, we are GPSing our sidewalks and creating an entire sidewalk inventory.
And so very grateful that council gave us the funding for that position for this year. We're working on all public sidewalks first and then from there, we'll go onto private sidewalks.
And this then can be used to help with cross sidewalk prioritization and where our gaps are. So it's a really great thing that council funded.
What I don't have listed on my agenda, but I did want to point out, is that we, as you're aware, we currently have a vacant seat for the ETJ for this board. There's also a vacant seat, or assuming a vacant seat, for the Board of Adjustment as well. There's less than fifty homes in Morrisville, some of which may not even be resided by the actual property handler, some of whom know our local properties, but we sent it out to all the homes. We sent postcards to them, we've had zero response. Sometime next week, we're going to send out individual letters to see if we can't get a response as well. If we are not able to get a response at that point, then we're going to start exploring, looking at the general corporate limits, which is we can do as well. If we are not able to find an ETJ member to volunteer, we are allowed to do it to our corporate limits. But I just want to let y'all know that we are actively trying to recruit. It's just a very small pool to pull from at this point.
Could you possibly send an email of the addresses to Esther? I did speak to Esther, she was willing to canvas people, but she couldn't think who else was in the ETJ.
I'm happy to send that to her.
Thank you. She doesn't know I've requested that, but I know she's a willing person, so.
I can even give her some postcards to hand out if you want.
Perfect.
And from that note, if you happen to know anybody in the ETJ that would love to volunteer, please encourage them to do so. I know it's, everybody looks the same, you don't wear a corporate limit hat versus an ETJ hat. But if you're unsure, they may or may not be, because they're not all registered down, ask me and I'm happy to tell you.
Thank you. So we ready to move on to item ten? And if I may, I'm going to jump in here with a proclamation that was presented to the planning staff and the planning and zoning board at the Tuesday meeting of the Town Council, proclaiming October 2017 as Community Planning Month. So the proclamation says that whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the planning and zoning board and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the town of Morrisville, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community planners of Morrisville and extend our heartfelt thanks for the commitment to public service by these dedicated professionals. Now therefore, Mark Stolman, Mayor of Morrisville and the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, adopted on the 10th day of October 2017. So I will hand that certificate around so that you can see the wonderful certificate, but it's nice to know that we're recognized and that was a privilege to accept it on behalf of the planning board and the planning staff on Tuesday. Any other comments, Rob? None for me? Lee? Arlene? Craig?
I do want to take public opportunity, please ask your indulgence for my losing my temper tonight. Courtney, I was trying to speak to you privately, but I did an opportunity and I'll try to do better. I do feel strongly that, that I don't like to do anything that I'm involved with or that I do without doing it right. And I didn't want to take this document that we spent so much time on and, and say, well, it doesn't really matter, or it's okay, or it'll be okay, don't worry about it. And believe it or not, I personally have been precipitating over a great deal, spent a lot of time on it, perhaps it manifests itself or that cup of Pike Place that I had before I got here did. I don't know which, but I apologize for losing my temper, Mr. Chairman, I apologize to you and commend you for trying to hold order tonight during a stressful session.
Well, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we were, we've lived through Park West and McCrimmon Corners and a few others, so tonight was very peaceful and calm actually, but thank you, Craig. Any other comments? So we'll move to item thirteen. Who hasn't made a motion tonight?
I made three, I'm good.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Word, Jared, thank you.